And to call your attention to the Open Meetings Act posted here in the council chambers. If you'd now please join me in rising for a moment of silence and the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance.
To the right of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Granquist.
Here.
Arnz.
Here.
Webb.
Here.
McCarthy.
Here.
Muren.
Here.
Snorton.
Here.
Lawson.
Here.
Hildebrand.
All right, with that, I would look for a motion to approve the consent agenda with these changes. I had a request to remove, request from staff to remove item 21 from the agenda altogether. Request from a citizen to remove items 14 and 19 from the consent agenda to the regular agenda.
I'll make a motion as stated.
To approve the consent agenda with the exception of removing item number 21 and moving 14 and 19 to the regular agenda.
Second.
Okay, motion second. If no discussion, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Motion carries.
Number six would then look for a motion to approve the full agenda.
So. So move.
Second. Motion second. If no further discussion, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Motion carries.
All right, that takes us to item 23 on our council agenda under special presentations, starting with a proclamation for September 12th, 2023, as goodwill of the Great Plains Day. The proclamation reads as such, whereas goodwill of the Great Plains started as Wall Street Mission in Sioux City in the year 1890, and whereas goodwill of the Great Plains joined the international goodwill movement in the year 1923, and a goodwill of the Great Plains retail store was opened in Norfolk in 1983. And goodwill of the Great Plains has grown over the years through the generosity of its donors, shoppers, community partners, and employees to continue its mission outreach to positively impact the lives of others throughout its service territory of northwest Iowa, northeast Nebraska, southwest Minnesota, and all of South Dakota. And for more than a century, goodwill of the Great Plains has advocated for economic self-sufficiency through employment and education, creating a world of dignity and compassion through the power of work. Now therefore, I, Josh Moaning, Mayor of the City of Norfolk, by the power vested in me, do hereby proclaim September 12th, 2023, as goodwill of the Great Plains Day. Is there any representative of goodwill here tonight to receive the proclamation? It appears not, so we will move on to item number 24. And tonight, we will have representatives from the Nebraska Public Power District provide us an update on a proposed seven to nine mile, 115 KV transmission line, starting at the existing substation on the east side of Norfolk proceeding east to a substation in Stanton County. Good evening.
Good evening. How's everyone tonight?
Good. How are you?
I'm Paul Bruni. I'm with Nebraska Public Power District. I'm the project manager for this project. We're gonna begin to route and site and construct here in the next several years. Do have some other MPPD staff with me tonight. On your left, probably a familiar face, Brittany Koning there, the representative here. Next to her is Grant Otten. He's with our corporate communications department about Columbus. And next to Grant is Tracy Custer, who's the engineer for the project here. So they're here tonight, and if you get technical questions, I'll probably turn to them to get the answer. So, got a little booklet there. If you just wanna follow along, page number two there. What we're doing is we're coming out early to let the public officials know of the project that we will be constructing, talk about the routing process, how we go through siting and interacting with the landowners, some of the public involvement, some of the environmental factors and considerations that go into sitting a power line, and then some of the engineering items that we look at to design and construct that project. Slide number three. So what's the purpose here? Need and benefit. The load in the Stanton, Coming County and Burke County area is growing. Stanton County Public Power District has a large load they're connecting out there, so we need to add some capacity to the system out there. And that benefits all the way down the line, all the way towards came out there. MPPD, SPP, which is the Southwest Power Pool, which Nebraska Public Power District is a member of, studied this new load and determined this line from the substation right east of Norfolk here on Omo Avenue, which we called Omo Avenue Sub, straight east to the substation northwest of Stan would be the appropriate fix to add that capacity to the system so we could serve that load out. Page number four. Let's talk about the public involvement process a little bit here. And there's a lot tied to this, and that's one of the reasons I'm here tonight, is to educate and communicate so we have a consistent message out there on the need and how we're gonna go about this. We're gonna start working with the landowners, potential landowners. A letter and invite was sent out September 1st, so that letter should be in their hands, and we'll talk about how we identify those landowners here in a little bit. And we wanna make plenty opportunities for the public, elected officials, and the potential landowners to have input, lots of input, because input helps us guide our decision to route and site that line. So we wanna hear from everyone. On slide number five, talks about some of the stakeholders. Obviously, the property owners and the tenants on that property, elected officials, that's why I'm here this evening, and some of our wholesale customers, Stanton County Public Power District, Elkhorn, and then some of the agencies involved here, Nebraska Game and Parks, US Fish and Wildlife Service, History of Nebraska, and along with the media. So, again, we wanna get out in front of them, deliver our message so they still know what we're planning to do here. Well, we go to slide number six there, page number six. Talk about the public involvement process, and that's, that takes a lot of time for a project to get that public involvement. We're gonna have an open house where we invite the potential impacted landowners to come to the open house, provide us their input. We'll talk about some of the components and some of the material we share with them at that meeting, and so we can get their input, because again, that helps us make decisions on how we cite the line. Once we have our public open house, we'll take that information back, analyze every comment we've received, and then determine which route we are going to propose. And at that point, we have a public hearing, and this is required by state law. It's a hearing, minutes are recorded, input from the landowners are recorded, so it's a very official process that we have when we propose the final route. After that, we have to wait 30 or more days from that public hearing. Has to be 30 or more days before we announce the route. That gives them another 30 days to provide input maybe they hadn't thought about, maybe someone didn't make it, they can give us that input. Again, we're gonna analyze all that information, and then we'll announce the final route. And from there, typically, come back to groups like this, county commissioners, public power districts, and let them know what decision was made on the route for the power line. On page number seven there, this project, September 19th is when we're gonna have an open house at Victory Road Assembly of God Church here in Norfolk. It's gonna be from 2 to 8, and the city should have received an invite or information for this, and we encourage you to attend if you so like, because we would like to hear from you and what your thoughts are. But we'll look at the proposed and alternate routes here in a little bit, but on that route, every landowner within a half mile either side of that proposed route is invited. So we do get a fair number of people here, but this line, we're out in a rural area, rural community, some landowners own large tracks, so it won't be like trying to route through town here, but there will be a fair number of people come. Along with the public open house, we have a website, and we also have a virtual open house. Technology today, you can do a lot of things, and we tried the virtual open house in Scotts, Bluff, and Carney where we just recently routed lines. And I was surprised at the amount of input and activity we saw in that virtual open house. People couldn't make it, chose not to. They get the same information on the virtual open house as they do the public meeting when they come and join us. They can leave their comments. So I think we found another avenue to get input from the landowners out there. The virtual open house will open up the same day as the public meeting we're gonna have, and then it will stay open till October 3rd for anyone to review the information and provide comment. And there's a website down there. If you so choose, you can sure go to it anytime. Go over to page number eight. We'll talk about kind of the format of the open house that we have. We have stations all around a large room, and we talk about seven or eight main items. One is why are we gonna do this, the need and the benefit, some of the things we look at during the siting and routing process, what, what information do we wanna get from the landowners? What do we want to hear from them? That's, that's really why we're having this, is to get their input. We'll talk about some of the environmental considerations that we take into consideration when we route a line, some of the engineering criteria, the right-of-way width where it may run. And then we also have GIS stations. We'll have a number of those with employees there that the landowner can sit down, provide their input on their piece of property, if there's future use items that we should know about, if there are things we don't see from our surveys, from our drive-throughs. We want that information from them again. That's, again, that helps us make good decisions when routing a power line. Slide number nine. When we go to route a line, it's kind of a balance of many things. So we're looking for a lot of input. You know, the first thing we look at is the social part of it, proximity to homes, schools, churches, businesses, you know, we wanna keep some distance. We also look at the environmental factors, the wetlands we're gonna cross, cultural resources out there, historic buildings that we should be aware of. And then we get to the end, we look at the engineering side of this, can, can it be engineered, and what is the cost of that if we decide to go a certain route? Because we, we need to keep cost in mind for our customers out there. So that's also one of, so we try to balance all those inputs in those three areas, and we bring those together to select the route. If you wanna turn to page 10, the green line on there is the preferred route. Our surveys, our investigation, our research, that looks like the most logical route from an environmental perspective, the number of landowners involved, some of the houses, trees in the area. The dotted yellow line is our alternate route. In case we go down that green route and we can't get through there for some reason, we may have to go back to the alternate route. It's not our preferred route. The green one is our preferred, but that's what we're gonna bring to the public, and that's what we're gonna talk to them about. And the landowners, half mile eager side of that, those lines have been invited. And if you look at the next page, the city of Norfolk has a piece of property out there right next to probably where we're gonna be routing. Now, we haven't picked side of road yet, but you do have a piece of property that adjoins the highway there that goes to Stan, which is very close to where we will be routing. If you go to page 12, they'll show you some of the typical structure types we use when we build a 115,000 volt transmission line. Typically, single pole, most of it would be wood, there'll be some steel poles out there on the turning angles, and occasionally, we'll use H-frame structures when we get out in the rural agricultural area, if it fits. So that, that's what you can expect to see. I was just gonna play out overtime. Again, open house in September, on the 19th. We'll take that information back, analyze it, determine our proposed route, and I would estimate in that first quarter of '24 is when we have our public hearing. Invite all the public in again, people who will be impacted by asking for easements on their property, and we'll have that public hearing to announce the route. Wait 30 days or more, send out the public notice officially stating the route, and then from there, we start on easement acquisitions, start talking to the landowners for right-of-entry permit, so we can do surveying, geotechnical work, or foundation work, and things like that. And then, as construction is planned to start the summer of 2025, with the anticipated date of being done the fall of '25. Last page, 14 there, gives you some contact information, ours website, there's an email address there, a phone number, and if you, if you get comments from the public, please refer them through these contact points here. We, we like to address them in that manner, that way they get to the right person. And again, that's kinda why we're, I'm here today, is to let you know what we're doing, to get inquiries, comments for the public. Here's the information you can provide to them to get that comment to. So that concludes my presentation. Thoughts, questions?
Thank you. Any questions, counsel? Well, we appreciate you being here to brief us on the potential project. I think we could all agree that enhanced investments in transmission infrastructure is typically good for everyone in terms of, as you said, enhanced reliability and resiliency. One question I had, you mentioned increased load in Stanton, Coming, and Burke Counties. Can you talk about the nature of that? Is that projected? Is that existing? A little bit of both?
These plans are put together on, they're trying to forecast out 10 years in advance. Early on, we, we know with that, we've seen the plan, we know what Coming County, their kind of, their customer that's gonna connect out there is a specific amount of load, but then you have to extrapolate that out for 10 years. So, you know, it takes us about three years to build a power line, so your planning horizon has to be out there, especially with, you know, trying to get material and equipment and labor to these things today. It, it can be a burden, so. It's a 10-year planning horizon, and the further out you go, the less confident we are, but these guys have been doing it a long time, so.
Very good.
If you want, I can stop back after we have our public hearing, and announce our route and talk to you if you like, or we can just send you the updated letter. It's really up to you. You just kinda let me know what you'd like.
Will do. Thank you for being here.
All right. Thanks for the time.
And thanks for the investment. Okay. That takes us to item number 25 on the council agenda under public hearings and related action. I will open this public hearing to consider a blighted and substandard declaration for the area referred to as the Norfolk downtown area, and to kick off discussion on this. Val, do you wanna give us some background? Are we here directly from J., Jeff Ray, Representative JEO?
Jeff did a great job at Planning Commission, so I think it might just be.
Okay. Jeff, we'll go directly to you. Welcome.
Thanks, Val. Jeff Ray with JEO Consulting. So I was hired to write a blight study, which I did conduct myself, and have a, a brief presentation to, to give to you. So, real quick, go ahead, Val. So thanks. Real quick, because we have a name called Blight Study, we have this ugly name attached, really, to an economic development tool. Kinda have to get past the name, as people don't necessarily understand. So my goal here tonight is to not only educate you on what was found in the study and the criteria under the Nebraska Community Development Law, but really, what does it mean? Why do we do a blight study? So really, there's only two reasons to do a blight study. One would be ultimately would incentivize an area for tax increment financing. That's not the intent here. I have been before you before for other blight studies where that has been more of the intent. The other reason is to pursue a downtown revitalization grant through Nebraska Department Economic Development, or CDBG grants, as we refer to those, and that is the particular component here that we're really focusing on. So, go ahead, Val. So real quick, you're, the authority for villages and cities in the state comes from the Nebraska Community Development Law. And by the way, all of the pictures here I'm showing are actually from the area. They are meant to depict the criteria that was found that specific day that we did the review, and that we found everything there when we looked at and did the analysis. It's not meant to shame anybody. It doesn't mean that the city needs to do anything. It doesn't mean a property owner needs to do anything. So hopefully, it's, it's not offensive to anybody. It's simply meant to convey that there's a preponderance of evidence that the criteria has been met. Okay? So as I said, this is the first step. You would declare an area blighted and substandard, do a generalized redevelopment plan, implement TIF if you want to do that, or do a CDBG downtown revitalization plan. The criteria, real quick here, to declare the area blighted, there should be a substantial number of deteriorating structures, unsanitary, unsafe conditions, deterioration of site improvements, decreasing population, average age of structures greater than 40 years of age, economic, social liabilities, diversity of ownership, improper subdivision, or obsolete plating. Half of the area's been in the incorporated area and been, remained unimproved for 40 years. There's a high density of population, special tax assessments or delinquencies that are greater than the fair market value. There's no magic number as to how many you have to meet. Sometimes projects only have one of these. Sometimes there's numerous ones, so we will go through those ones that we were found. And then on the substandard characteristics, they're very similar. Dilapidation, deterioration, age, obsolescence of the structures, dangerous conditions for life, inadequate provisions for light, ventilation, and air, defective or unusual conditions of title, greater than 120% of unemployment. I've never seen that one done, and is difficult to prove as well. And the city per capita income is less than the, than the area-wide average. So real quick, the study area that you can see before you, go ahead, is almost exactly to the same area that's currently declared blighted and substandard for your downtown area. This is really an update or a relook at this to say, do these characteristics still exist? It was modified slightly because we realized in the process and with the help of staff that there was a, a little bit of an overlap, and we didn't wanna count it into two blight areas, because you are limited on your total acreage. So the reason we looked at this area were for the existing area, not only for the characteristics that were there, but potential revitalization, potential for the grant opportunity and eligibility as well. And the analysis and findings, 71% of the structures were rated as deteriorating or dilapidated. Almost all of them were rated as deteriorating. I think there was only maybe one dilapidated. And really, that criteria, if you can think about it in a, in a, in a easy term, is would that particular business owner or homeowner need a contractor to help them bring that house up to current standard, or business up to standard, meaning new windows, tuck pointing on bricks, new roof, those types of things? If it's just general maintenance, it would not fall into that category. Throughout the area, as you can imagine, this is Old Town Norfolk, right? Most of the buildings right there on Norfolk Avenue are on small, narrow lots. Those are not very conducive to modern development. Many of them very narrow and then long. There were a few landlocked lots. There were some that you have a, obviously, a river or chase coming through here, and a railroad that create weird, odd angles, some that are very acute and difficult to build upon. So those are all criteria that were in there, that were looked at, as far as some of them being obsolete plating or improper plating. deterioration of site. We looked at all of the public improvements that were there, particular sidewalks and the streets. Many of them were fairly good, but there were definitely a notice, especially on the sidewalk side, many of them could be improved, as well as some roads. As you know, your road is your first area of your drainage system and your gutters, where they collect and channel that water into your storm drain system. I will note that we always stayed on public property and through alleys and streets when we did this analysis, we did not trespass on private property. Okay? Potential unsafe conditions. So as we turn on our GIS maps, you can see, these were spread throughout the entire district. There was a lot of things that were here, some, there's some debris piles in some place that can harbor rodents and so forth, as well as cause fire damage, fire hazards. There are railroad crossings, lack of sidewalks in some areas, the age of structures. As you remember, prior to 1978, we had a lot of paint that had lead paint in it. That's considered hazardous to, to health as it flakes off, as well as some of the older buildings could potentially have asbestos in them, as many of these buildings are of that era where they would potentially still have those, although it may be covered up today. And then some of the tripping hazards and site accessibility on the sidewalks were noted as well. Couple examples, you can see some potential unsafe conditions, buildings, debris piles, unpaved roads, lots of stuff parked on the lot. Age of structure. So it, the state statute actually says that 40 years of age is old. Anything is either residential, average age of 40 years of age, or commercial. Here, both. We're well over that with 89 and 90 respectively, according to the management and county assessors' records that we were able to pull, and do those for virtually all of the buildings when they're within that area. I would say the one exception to that would be any public building or churches. There typically was no record on that, so we left those out of that average. As we go through and we turn then on all of those layers and those criteria, as we look at it, we wanna make sure that we're delineating an area that is actually evenly dispersed, and not everything is in one corner, and we're clopping in a big area. So as you can see, most of those parcels contained at least one characteristic of blighted substandard, and it was evenly dispersed throughout the area. So overall, our recommendation would be that you would declare this area blighted substandard. The Planning Commission also agreed with this. We found nine of the 12 blight criteria to be present at a, at a high level, and three of the four substandard characteristics, so a total of 12 of the 16 potential criteria were found to be there. With that, I could take any questions that Mr. Mayor and the council would maybe have.
Right. Thank you, Jeff. Any questions, counsel?
On our, on our website map, it shows this is already blighted substandard. So what's this? Are we redeclaring?
Red designation.
We need to re-declare it to be eligible for your grant criteria. Maybe, Mrs. Park, it must be less than 10 years of age, and I believe it's 14, is that right, Candace? Like, it's, it's greater than 10 years.
Okay.
Your current designation, so it had to be revital, re-studied. That's typically the only time you would re-study an existing area, otherwise it remains blighted substandard until you, as the council, would say it's no longer blighted substandard.
Any other questions? I think you're off the hook pretty easily, Jeff. Thank you for being here. Thanks for the presentation before Planning Commission as well. This is a public hearing, so anyone wishing to make comment can do so now.
Jim McKenzie. And I'm, I'm not against the, the grant program at all. I just wanted to, to note a few things when I read through that blight and substandard, and that's just kinda goes with the whole criteria of that study. On page, excuse me, figure five on page 19 of the study shows all the parcels that are considered blighted and substandard for one of those criteria. And I just wanted to mention a few of those parcels and the structures that they contain. One would be the new City Library Building is considered a blighted and substandard parcel, the new Chamber of Commerce Building, Apira, Hy-Vee East Grocery Store, and almost all the buildings between First and Seventh Street on both sides of Norfolk Avenue that are recently renovated. So those are all considered blighted and substandard according to these criteria, I guess. And so if some of that's because it's close to the river, it's close to the railroad tracks, I mean, in that case, no matter how many dollars you put into those properties, they will forever be blighted and substandard. So I just think that it's important to point that out.
Anyone else wishing to make comment? Hearing no one. Planning Commission report, please.
Norfolk Planning Commission held a public hearing to hear comments on and review the blight and substandard determination study. blighted and substandard determination study for the area referred to as downtown area on August twenty-second, two thousand twenty-three. Planning Commission recommends approval of the declaration with a seven to zero vote.
Okay, with that, I will close the hearing and move to item twenty-six. Would look for a motion to consider resolution number twenty-two-three dash fifty-five approving the blighted and substandard declaration for the area referred to as the Norfolk downtown area.
I'll make a motion for consideration of resolution number twenty-two-three dash fifty-five.
Second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion, council? Hearing none, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Resolution twenty-two-three dash fifty-five is adopted.
Item twenty-seven will open this public hearing concerning the activities of the Nebraska Department of Economic Development for a community development block grant, CDBG, regarding the tourism development grant nineteen-td dash zero-zero-two. And to kick off this public hearing, we'll hear from Andrea Larson of the Northeast Nebraska Economic Development District.
Hello, I am Andrea Larson. I am with NINED here in Norfolk. The purpose of this public hearing is it is a second public hearing, and it's a requirement of the Community Development Block Grant for Grant nineteen td zero-zero-two. That was a grant awarded to assist with the Johnson Park overall project. It included the construction of the restrooms and a parking lot. The City of Norfolk was awarded the CDGB Tourism Development Funds of four hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars, of which four hundred thousand dollars or all project funds were used for the removal of architectural barriers at Johnson Park located at one oh one East Nebraska Avenue, Norfolk, Nebraska, Madison County, Nebraska. Twenty-five thousand dollars was awarded for grant administration, and ten thousand was awarded for construction management. The City of Norfolk provided the required match of one hundred thousand dollars for the tourism development project activities. Project activities included the construction of ADA restrooms, concrete sidewalks, and a concrete parking lot. All project activities, all project activities funding has been expended to date. Two thousand three hundred and eighty-five dollars has been used for construction management to date, and eight thousand five hundred and six dollars and fifty-one cents has been used for general administration of the grant. No persons, businesses, or farms were displaced as a result of these community development block grant activities.
All right, thank you, Andrea. And again, this is more or less a formality in terms of having received and utilized the grant, having a public hearing as a conclusion or summary of the work that was done with the grant funds. Is that correct?
Correct.
Any other questions for Andrea? Thank you. This is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to make comment can do so now. Okay, seeing no one, we'll close the hearing and move on, going back to item, to our regular agenda, but including item fourteen. Would look for a motion to consider approval of the mayor's call to hold a special meeting on Thursday, September fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three, at twelve P.M. to conduct public hearings on the proposed two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four budget and tax request.
I'll make a motion for consideration of approval.
Motion and second. And Randy, our Randy Gates, our City Finance Officer, can you give us a little background on the calling for this public meeting regarding the budget?
We used to normally have our budget hearings at the council meeting where we approve the budget, so they would be done five-thirty in the evening. A couple of years ago, they changed the law to say you could not, you had to have a separate meeting where all you're doing is considering the budget. For the budget hearing, that has to be separate from the meeting where you approve the budget. So we've had, this is the third year now that we're operating under that criteria. One year, we had the budget hearing at noon. Another year, we had it at five-thirty in the evening. So we've done it both in the evening and noon. This year, it's scheduled for noon.
And Randy, remind us, in those previous years, was the hearing, that noon meeting the same day as the council meeting?
In prior years, before they changed the law, we would have the hearing at the council meeting where the budget was.
At the council meeting. But in the last three years, have they been separate days? Does the law require separate days or just separate meetings?
They don't require separate days. They require a separate meeting. But the problem you have is you're supposed to have the minutes prepared before your next meeting, so it gets kind of tight if you try and do it in the same day. I think we're handling, probably gets a little frazzled when that happens.
Okay. Thank you, Randy, for that background. Any questions on that or discussion? Any input, public input?
Jim McKenzie, I would just respectfully request that that be held in the evening when more of the public are able to attend.
All right. Any other discussion? And staff, I don't know if you want to talk about the timing in that? That has been discussed, as Randy said, both. We've had meetings held at both times, either at noon or at five-thirty. Has, have we seen really in past history any difference in terms of turnout, public turnout for these meetings, whether they're held at, over the noon hour or at five-thirty in the evening?
We normally don't have much of a turnout regardless of when they're held.
I think it's worth noting, too, that these hearings are held in the wake of budget review sessions that are held in July typically, which typically go on for hours. I think this last one was about a ten-hour, eleven-hour meeting, so. And those are open to the public, those are public meetings at which the budget is very much scrutinized in terms of department, by department reviews of budget recommendations. Any other discussion on this? Okay, hearing none, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Motion carries.
Takes us to item nineteen, also removed from the consent agenda and added to regular. I'd look for a motion to consider approval of a recommendation by the Public Arts Council to purchase two sculptures and place one in the Eighteenth Street Roundabout and one to place permanently at Riverpoint Square.
I'll for consideration of approval of recommendation, the Public Arts Council.
Good. Motion and a second. For some background on this, Nate Powell, our Parks and Rec Director. Nate?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is a, I'll just give some history here. We've had some discussions at the last couple of meetings about purchasing art pieces throughout the city. We knew the deadline was coming up to make the purchases. Discussion about the sunflower for the Eighteenth Street Roundabout and also a dog, the dog for Riverpoint Square. We did not have a quorum at our last meeting, but knowing that we were going to hit the deadline for this fiscal year to make the purchases, and based on the discussions that we've had, we reached out to the committee president for an informal recommendation for staff on these two items. And staff recommends purchasing empty space for the Eighteenth Street Roundabout and Rocky Two for Riverpoint Square for a total of fifteen thousand seven hundred.
Okay. Thank you, Nate. Any questions for Nate, always up here?
I think the plan would be to keep it where it's at for now, or find another place within Riverpoint Square is what was recommended. The Dog Park was a staff recommendation, but we haven't been able to get that from the committee president, preferred the Riverpoint Square. But we could also take that back to them for a look at it at the location if we need to.
The plan for now is to keep it where it is?
That's correct, for now, yeah.
So again, the background on Public Arts Council is a group of citizens who make recommendations to the council on the placing and integration of public art. Correct? Okay. All right. Any other discussion on this? Questions? Okay. Thank you, Nate. Any input, public input on this?
Thanks, Nate.
Jim McKenzie. First of all, let me say I'm a fan and advocate of public art. I've been a regular contributor to the Arts Center Endowment. There are many wonderful people on the Arts Council, some of whom I know personally. My concern is about using our limited public tax dollars to purchase art, such as these sculptures to be put in roundabouts and other areas. Starting in fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two, the city budgeted eighty-four thousand dollars for public art and the Arts Council. And if you include that through the upcoming year of twenty-three, twenty-four, you've committed over two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of local tax dollars in public art in three years. The capital improvement plan for the upcoming fiscal year shows the city plans to issue over seventeen million dollars of new debt on top of all the other debt we already have. In an era where the city has to issue debt every single year to pay for routine expenses, does it make sense to borrow money every year to put it into public art? Because in essence, that's exactly what you're doing. Every dollar you spend over your income is a dollar you have to borrow and pay interest on. At some point, you have to prioritize your spending. But in reality, I guess you already have done that. You're prioritizing spending tax dollars on public art over renovating the police station. You are saying we will commit existing tax dollars to public art, but we will not commit existing tax dollars to the police station. You may say, well, that's not enough to renovate the police station. By itself, yes, but there are many other items in the budget like this. If you prioritize your spending differently, the police station renovation would have already been underway without a tax increase. There are hundreds of millions of dollars of personal wealth in this community. Why not ask the communities to support public art through donations? Is it because it's easier to just say, we'll tack it on to Citizens Property Tax Bill and hope they won't notice? That way, we won't have to do any work for fundraising? If the public won't donate eighty-five thousand dollars a year, then what does it say about the community commitment to public art? But I think they will. We need to start thinking differently. We can't just keep raising taxes and going further and further into debt. At some point in time, we have to make decisions. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim, for those prepared remarks. Any other discussion? Comments on this? I will note that the seed money for the Public Arts Council did come from CARES Act dollars, not from local property tax dollars. And I would say, given the reception, I've noted from people who've visited Norfolk, the Sculpture Walk and the efforts of Visitors Bureau and other entities that have integrated public art, seem to have been greatly appreciated in building an environment in our downtown, which I know, I've seen you enjoy yourself, Jim, where people want to come and spend money and their time and invest in a place and environment that they feel at home. So I personally feel like these, this fairly minimal investment in continuing public art in the community is justified. Any other public discussion on this? No further discussion, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Motion carries.
Moves us to our regular agenda, item number twenty-eight. Would look for a motion to consider approval of change order number one F with A&R Construction for the East Benjamin Avenue Trail Continuation Project resulting in an increase of two thousand fifteen dollars and five cents.
I'll make a motion for consideration of approval.
Second.
Motion and second. For some background on this, Steve Ramis, our Public Works Director, please. Or Anna Allen, sorry. Assistant City Engineer.
I'll take the word for Steve. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Staff is asking for approval of a final change order in the amount of two thousand fifteen dollars and five cents. This is for the East Benjamin Avenue Trail Project. This portion of the project was awarded to A&R Construction in August to complete the east end of the trail across Highway thirty-five. The change order provides for adjusting to final quantities on the project. And with this change order, with that increase, with the change order, the project still comes in approximately fifty-two hundred dollars under budget. If anybody has any questions about the change order, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Anna. Any questions?
Anna, I got a few questions. This trail project is, this is the second time it was let, we had let it to Steve Harris Construction because of some technical difficulties with the, I believe, the highway department. We, we had to, we had a change order to reduce their change order of twenty-one thousand some odd dollars. And then to approve it, once we got the permit with the Department of Roads for twenty-nine thousand nine hundred and six dollars, and now we're back at the table asking for two thousand and fifteen dollars and five cents. And I understand there's a quantity change, but how do we let this twice? Two different contractors, and we're still, don't know our quantities? I guess that's just a question that I have, a little frustration.
Right. And I can understand the frustration with that, coming to the table again. The, one of the bigger items that has come in front of us on this change order was the erosion control matting. So when they were out there doing the work that they needed to do, a previous contractor had put the erosion control mat out there, and with some of the grading that they needed to do with this portion of the trail when they were paving it, they had to replace some of that erosion control fabric. So it looks like that is a majority of the addition of that for this change order.
So it's not, the quantity is not the concrete, it's the quantity is that we're erosion control blanketing?
Correct. So the, looks like we were over thirteen square yards for the trail itself. And then we had a deduction for the detectable warning panels, and we also had an addition for subgrade preparation. But the majority of it was that erosion control that had to be replaced.
Did A&R have a separate contractor come in and lay that for fourteen thousand eighteen dollars and thirty-six cents, or was that their own crew doing that?
I believe it was their own crew. I don't think they had a subcontractor.
On the original trail project, they did have a subcontractor?
They did have a subcontractor, correct.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you, Anna. Any public discussion or input? Hearing none, please vote.
Voting in the affirmative. Grandquist, Arnz, Webb, McCarthy, Muirin, Snorton, Clausen. Voting in opposition. Hildebrand, motion carries.
Item twenty-nine, would look for a motion to consider approval to purchase equipment from BizCo for fifty-two thousand four hundred and thirty-eight dollars to replace a microphone system and voting display board in the council chambers located in the city's administration building.
I'll make a motion for consideration of approval.
Second.
Motion and second. For some background on this, we'll hear from Brad Anderson, our City IT Manager.
Mayor and Council, the system being proposed, we'll replace all these microphones in here, including the voting display board. We're going to go with more digital system. This also includes a software package that'll allow you to vote directly from the microphone base rather than the little switch that you have now. As you know, we've had quite a few issues recently with the microphones. We've had some bases die in microphones, cabling issues, static feedback, those kind of things. The system's just... The system's just starting to show its age. The projectors, cameras, streaming equipment, and the control system, that's all going to stay in place. And due to that, the vendors that we reached out to had, we needed a requirement that they would be able to integrate with that existing system. Of those responses, Bizco was the only one that was able to do that, which is why you're only seeing the one hooked there. Do you have any questions?
Yeah, with the new equipment, will it help on, as we're live streaming the meetings so we don't have any, you know, glitches or whatever?
Correct, yeah. Brianna will actually have the ability, if the microphones turned off or on, she can, she can remotely change that. So, yeah, it will definitely help with live streaming.
Will Brianna be able to see the vote count without putting on her glasses on the board?
Correct.
Okay, that's good, okay. Are you, you referenced showing its age, how, how old, I'm curious myself, is this system that we have here?
I don't have an exact age of the system, but I'm, from what I've heard and the research that I've done, it's at least 20 years old.
Good.
Close though.
All right, any other questions? Thank you, Brad.
Thanks.
Any further discussion or public input on this? Hearing none, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, motion carries.
Item 30, we'd look for a motion to consider approval of amendment number two to the Engineering Services Contract with Olson for the Wetland Mitigation Bank Project for an amount not to exceed $123,384.
I'll make a motion for consideration of approval.
Second.
Motion in second, once again, we'll hear from Anna Allen, or, you guys got to help me out with this. It was opposite, it's Anna on this one, Steve on this one. All right, Steve Ramis, our Public Works Director.
Sorry about that, Mayor. For the last three years, we've been working with Olson on the establishment of a wetland mitigation bank on the southwest side of the community. It would be south of Omaha Avenue, west of 37th Street in that corridor section there. We've gotten to the point where we had submitted the, the preliminary design to the Corps of Engineers a little over a year ago, actually about 16 months ago. That did come back with comments, we've revised those comments and are ready to move the project into the next stage of design, which would include the permitting, final design, water, geotechnical exploration for, for what we call a water budget, which basically is looking at where we would get the water and how much water is available there locally to sustain a wetland. This is a pretty significant project for us in terms of city needs for wetlands and also just economic development for wetlands. Currently, it can take anywhere from 12 months to 18 months for a developer to mitigate wetlands off of a potential development site. Once this bank is approved, we get through the final design stage and the Corps approves the project, we'd be able to make somewhere between 5% and 10% of those acres available for immediate use for banking purposes. Ultimately, this is going to be somewhere in the 50 to potentially 80 acre range. So it would, again, substantially increase our ability to, to assist with economic development projects here in the community. Any questions?
Thank you, Steve, any questions?
Funding source for this particular project.
Stormwater fees.
Stormwater fees.
We would expect that the majority, we'd expect to be submitting final design towards the end of calendar year 2024. This is probably, just depending on how the different phases of this run, 14, 15 months to get through final design.
Okay, thank you, Steve. Public input or discussion on this?
I had another question too, when you're working this, when you're working through this particular procedure with somebody about mitigating wetlands or transferring wetlands to help speed up a project, does that particular developer have to come up with funding for, you know?
They do, we would ultimately establish a, a dollar value to those, to those acres. Right now, I would say in the state, you're looking somewhere, somewhere probably 30 to 45,000 an acre.
Got you, so could this potentially be in a situation where you're, you know, you've set the land aside, you're getting funding back, can you just kind of bank that, those funds and then keep investing so you're?
Correct. You know, we happen to own this ground, it's likely that in the next, once this is full, we would probably have to purchase the next, next, the next ground.
Try to do that with funds that you recuperated from the sale of these projects? Okay.
Where's this at, it was on 37th Street?
This would be south of Omaha Avenue, so it'd be catty corner from the Bradford Business Park, south and west of Bradford Business Park.
Any further questions?
I do have just one quick question. So I see there's like 110 acres. This particular one, does it have to be in one location if you do find another spot? Would you amend this or create a new one?
We try to maximize what we can do on a site. It also just depends a little bit on the topography of the site and, and where the water's coming from. We try to minimize the actual hard excavation type work that has to be done to create the wetland. We want to use the, the ground and its natural condition as best we can. So just trying to maximize that. Ultimately, this, this will only serve the portion of the city west of the floodway or west of our flood control system. The east, east of the flood control system is a different biological region or wetland region. So if we were to do, need to mitigate something on the east side, that would take a different And I would expect this to last us quite, quite a while. I, I'd say 20 years probably. There are many of these in the state, most of them are owned by the Department of Transportation, and we're not allowed to use those.
All right, any further questions? If no further discussion, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, motion carries.
Item 31, we'd look for a motion to consider ordinance number 5847 amending section 2-5 of the city code to update building electrical, mechanical, and plumbing permit fees. So note, this ordinance has an operative date of October 1st, 2023.
All over consideration, ordinance 5847. Second.
Motion in second, for some background on this, please, Val Grimes, our city planner.
Thank you. This was discussed last time as part of that ordinance that had more fees on there. This just has the permit department fees, so it was broken up. And this is about a 3% raise or a penny or a fraction of a penny if it just was a, like per square foot, and it's just a sense as it is. This does put us kind of in the middle of the pack of our sister cities when we look at the totals. What we do is we take kind of a standard residential and a standard commercial and run the, the numbers from ours with our proposed and then what they have for their fees too. And this pretty much puts us in the, in the middle of everybody with these proposals.
Okay, thank you, Val, any questions?
Thanks for splitting that up and taking that off with the water sewer and on separate from permits and fees.
Further questions, comments, discussion, public? No further discussion, short title, please.
An ordinance of the City of Norfolk, Nebraska to amend section 2-5 of the official city code to update building electrical, mechanical, and plumbing permit fees to provide when this ordinance shall be in full force and effect and to provide for the publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
Please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, ordinance number 5847 carries on first reading.
I'll make, I'll make a motion to suspend the rules and waive the second and third reading for ordinance number 5847.
Motion in second to suspend the rules and approve on second and third readings. No further discussion, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, ordinance number 5847 carries on second and third.
Okay, that concludes this meeting of the Norfolk City Council, we are adjourned.